Carly School Committee meeting to order. Everybody will stand, please. Mr. Walsh, you lead us in the Fledge of Allegions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to this republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor was not able to be with us tonight. We miss him, as usual. He runs a very good meeting. School committee members and student reports. The chair report. No chair report tonight. Resource meeting. We had a meeting on May 10th. We approved the minutes of the meeting. We went through grant donations that are going to be submitted tonight. Professional development, our proposal by the superintendent. We had, Ms. Carrie Purcell was there, who talked about Focus Schools, talked about the success that has been accomplished in turning around some of our schools, and talked about her work with our school leadership teams. She will be speaking tonight, I believe. Thank you, Carrie. We had an enrollment update from Eva. An E-Rate and ECF update, Mylene. The redistricting was, we were given more information by Mr. Shalafu. I believe all the boxes have been distributed or will be distributed to all the schools for our teachers to box up their materials. He gave us a FY23 budget update. That was the resource and on. The school building maintenance, we also met on May 10th. It was a lengthy meeting. The director gave us an update on a number of the activities that were going on. Two open positions due to promotions and transfers still. So anybody out there looking for a job, we still have some openings. Vehicles, we took possession of the new one-ton dump truck and combined with the new district ground keepers trailer are allowed for improved services at our school district. All vehicles have been letted, indicating Pittsburgh School Building Maintenance. School Building Maintenance does have a need for a new pickup truck to replace the truck traded in recently. This vehicle would be assigned to the Crocker Field caretaker. A HARA department-wide annual training is wrapping up. Most members completed it on 5/2 and are currently getting stragglers in for training. South Street South Building Gym, ceiling abatement is complete. The floor at Long Joe, gym floor at Long Joe Middle School, it probably is, it's going to have to be replaced. Hopefully, that'll be done for the coming school year. All other gym floors are in the process of scope development for a screen and reco to be completed after redistricting. Some of the other things. Dangerous tree removed at Rangel Elementary Playground. Fire alarm panel inspection will be replaced on 5/15. School Building Maintenance is providing a 24/7 fire watch as requested by the Pittsburgh Fire Department. New water bottles, filling stations installed at, two of them at FHS and two at Long Joe Middle School. One of the things we negotiated, clothing allowance is being paid to all school building maintenance people. In the very near future, all school building maintenance workers will be identified with their school building maintenance shirts. I also did some other checking on a couple of the schools for, I was asked by a member about our school cleanliness and I have checked with a number of. Corridors are mostly being washed once a week and school cafeterias weekly with spot cleanups. And I think there's some other questions, if something else that might like to have done.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. We spoke to, and say thank you also to Mr. Shalafu for letting us know that there is a possibility of some funds to be able to repaint some of the walls at Long Joe. And he said there's a plan also for the windows to be replaced at some point and the blinds to be changed. So we're just thanking you for allowing us to just put a little feminine touch in the beautification of Long Joe Middle School. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Yeah, well. The redistricting planning update is going along very well. The Long Joe and FHS solar project update, which is also on tonight's agenda. A new caretaker has been hired for Crocker Field, which is really good because now people can walk there. They're lunchtime, a lot of people like it, so it will be open during the week. We had accelerated repair project updates and accelerated repair updates for South Street Elementary. Documents have closed out. There will be a replacement playground for the South Street Early Learning Center and Rangel. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Policy Committee? Nothing. Student support?
Yes, thank you again. We had a meeting on the 12th of this month and we approved the minutes from the last meeting, which was on May the 12th. Superintendent Robert Jokler gave us an update on the school year 2022 student attendance. We had Ron Demanci, the administrator of pupil services, gave us an update on students' mental health. And she mentioned how currently the DESA assessment system is used to target struggling students with social and emotional issues. They are running individual council support and conducting rounds of suicide watch to target students that are exhibiting signs. She's, I mentioned that all schools have a clinical interventionist to help with those issues and these two new interventionists at the high school. And she said that the agencies were between telemarketing and telehealth due to COVID-19. Yep, there were questions that were arisen, you know, wanting to know, no, Rosemary mentioned that she heard about some girls that, at other schools, that were cutters and was asking if those were issues that we were seeing and if anyone were mimicking the students and so forth. And the response was that they saw a number of students supporting the students with the problems rather than mimicking them. And we also talked about lieutenant, actually lieutenant from the Pittsburgh Police Department. He just mentioned his name, Jeff. He gave us an update of the memorandum of understanding between the Pittsburgh Public Schools and the Pittsburgh Police Department. We also talked about the importance of hiring a principal of color. And we asked, there were some suggestions that were asked, what can be done in order to help recruit administrators of color because all the schools right now have a principal that is Caucasian. And, you know, since we have at the high school, 76% of students of color, we would like to see an administrator that is representative of the body of students that are served. And that's it. Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'd just like to make a comment about this. I'd like to clarify, not that I actually think it can be clarified tonight, perhaps it can. I would like to know what of color means. The definition of of color. You mentioned Caucasians. What are, as part of, what other groups are there? We just use these words and I'd like to identify them.
I, I would take, a person of color to me would be anybody other than white Caucasian.
Perfect.
Well, I have, I have problems with that, just conceptually. We're one human race, all types. I, you know, I, in casual conversation, you don't need to answer if you don't care to. But in casual conversation, I asked you if you considered yourself a person of color. And I think you mentioned, like, through the years, you were identified as maybe three or four different things. Can you tell us what they were?
I remember when I got to the United States, I was black. I remember being African-American and I am Hispanic. And I'm not the one that changed the way they identify me, you know, even in the educational arena, they tend to change the way how they make reference to different ethnic groups. And now I know that they call me a person of color. I don't have a problem. I look like I'm of color, so I don't have a problem with that.
Maybe.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. My question is, I don't understand what this has to do with the report. I think we're getting off track.
Right.
In terms of personal issues or personal things. If you have a question about that, then maybe you need to ask her that question off the record, not in this particular setting. So I'd like for, to consider standing on the agenda.
Yeah, thank you.
That makes sense.
I'd like to say that I am a representative of the people. They voted for me. I was voted in, as were you.
Mr. Hughes, Mr. Hughes' point of order, that's not part of the agenda.
That's too easy to use. If I have something on my mind that people generally have on their mind, I'd like to bring it forth and clarify it or advance somehow in understanding.
Point of order, let's move on the agenda. At this time, Ms. Tia Gopals, thank.
On May 17th and 18th, the sophomores will be taking the Math MCAS, which partially determines whether a student earns a high school diploma. This year, they will be taking the MCAS online. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Excuse me. Quick, T, you said that everybody will be taking the MCAS online this year?
Yes, only the sophomores.
Only sophomores, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, we have a motion to approve.
Just to make sure that's clarified, all students, the majority of students in Pittsburgh take the MCAS assessment online.
Okay. It's done in school. In a school, right? Okay. On the computer, right. Online was different. Not at home.
It's back to normal, but in school. How's that?
It's in school, but it's done online.
Okay, thank you.
It's not paper and pencil.
We have a motion to approve the previous school committee meeting. It's a move. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Communications. Mr. Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Saturday, I attended the Pittsburgh State University commencement and there was, it was a very excellent ceremony and I just learned earlier before our meeting tonight that Dr. Knight's daughter, Vanaida.
Vanaida.
Vanaida graduated with a bachelor's in psychology. But the point I wanted to bring up that I think the school committee should know and the residents of Pittsburgh should know, as well as the teachers at Pittsburgh High School, the valedictorian of the class of 2022 was Sebastian Goyet Conerty. And what's significant about that is that Sebastian was the valedictorian in the class of 2019 from Pittsburgh High School. And Sebastian is from Ashby. And the reason he decided to do school choice at Pittsburgh High is that Pittsburgh High participates in early college. He was able to take two years of his junior and senior, I believe, college courses at Pittsburgh State. He then finished his bachelor's degree at Pittsburgh State in three years. And once again, a valedictorian with a grade point average of 3.98. And I would just like to read the ending of his valedictorian address, which I think shows you the type of student that graduates from our high school. And he says, "For those of you who faced hardships and found yourself burdened by responsibilities on top of your education, I'm right there with you, as are your fellow graduates and loved ones. I see in the crowd today people that manage to continue on the path to a brighter future and I encourage you all to continue to use your strength and resilience to create new ideas and better yourself and your community." And I think that's, shows the type of education that our students receive at the high school and throughout our district and a very well-balanced, a very intelligent person, but yet down-to-earth. And I was so proud to have him, he mentioned that he was a graduate of Pittsburgh High School. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Stevens, may I say?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank everyone who actually came out to our annual Title I Fair this past Saturday. It was held at South Street Elementary School. It was a great event. We had over 400 people show up at this event, to the point where we actually had, we ran out of food to serve breakfast. So it was a wonderful event and I just wanted to thank everyone for coming and everyone involved in planning the event and making it such a success. So, thank you.
A little comment on that. Eva, since you're here, have two ice cream trucks next year. This Wednesday night will be the Pittsburgh High School Alumni Association Annual Meeting, where we'll be giving out awards to 75 students this year. As Jim had mentioned about our students at Pittsburgh High School, as I'd like to say a lot of times, don't look always where our students go, but where they've been accepted to. Our students get accepted to some of the most prestigious colleges in the country. The last several years along, we've had several students accepted at Harvard University and have done very well. And some schools never get anybody into Harvard University. But our kids go all over the country. They do very, very well and they're very well-prepared. They get an outstanding education. That's, it's evident to where our kids are going. So Wednesday night, 6 o'clock, Pittsburgh High School. I'm chairman of the High School Alumni Association, so I'm just pushing a little bit. And we have a lot of volunteers who put in a lot of time to make this possible for our students. Is there anybody for public comment tonight? See, nobody for public comment. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. We have a lot of information to go over and share with you and the community. And first, I'd like to welcome Lieutenant Jeffrey Howe and Chief Martino to come up to the chair in front of the table here and talk about the update to the school memorandum of understanding. There's a template that was recently approved and is being implemented across the state of Massachusetts. Last week, at the Student Support Subcommittee meeting, the Student Support Subcommittee meeting heard, had a second hearing and discussion on this proposed MOU. And Chief Lieutenant Howe, welcome. And the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the school committee. It's a pleasure to be here this evening and talk about this long-awaited MOA that we've created across the state. I think we've made significant strides in the last two years of being extremely transparent on exactly what our role is when we're as invited guests in your schools. And with this policy, we've created something across the state that, what is defined here in Pittsburgh is defined in 365 other communities. This is the MOA of the state. This is what the state is expecting the relationships between law enforcement agencies and school districts to comprehend. And it outlines our roles, defines our roles, and explains exactly what is it to be expected from law enforcement at your schools. I can tell you that I provide a significant commitment to my SRO program. I see the value of it each and every day. We are earning dividends every day on our relationships that we're building. The relationships that are going to last a lifetime. We have built significant bridges and I think I'm preaching to the choir here how important this program is. And now with this defined outlook of what is exactly expected of us in your schools, I think we've taken it one step further. This Wednesday at Long Joe, I got District Attorney Early coming up to present award to our SRO at Long Joe for a life-saving event. As some of your members may be aware, my SRO officer, SRO Hashi at Long Joe observed a child choking and provided the Heimlich maneuver and saved and delarged that from the child as she was choking. And the district attorney is coming up to present award on behalf of the District Attorney's Office for that outstanding effort by students.
When's that date again?
It's Wednesday, May 2nd, May 2nd. This coming Wednesday at 2:00 PM.
At?
At Long Joe.
At Long Joe.
Yep. So I think we're, I really, we're at a good point now with this MOA, where the lines have really been distinctly outlined on what is expected of us in your schools. And I think the relationship that my department has with Mr. Jokler and your department is second to none. And we're going to continue to find ways to be robustly involved with each other. Just a couple of weeks ago, I spent the morning high-fiving kids up at Rangel and, you know, that made my entire day and just made the weekend that much more pleasurable. The investment that I can make, give back to the public schools with that type of relationship, I think it's imperative. I wouldn't be in this position as I am today if I didn't make that relationship 40 years ago at BF Brown with police officers that were working school dances, where we were seen communicating with each other and I made that relationship. And that really formed my career path to become a police officer. So I think it's that important. And I'm excited that we now have ground rules. Everybody knows what is expected and I think only, the possibilities are endless on where we can go. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this MOA if that's, if that's okay with you. Otherwise, you can always reach my office and I'd be happy to discuss this in private with any member at any time.
Jim?
I guess for you, Chief, and for Superintendent Jokler, you mentioned this was a template, this was a template that was sent out to all the schools in the Commonwealth and then you kind of tweaked it to fit our particular city.
This language was designed by a statewide school resource officer committee.
Okay.
So these are recommendations from the entire state with a combination of committees made up of educators and law enforcement. And we put together this model MOA that is indicative to all districts across the county. So, I mean, quite frankly, I mean, we all understand the needs in our own districts, but this outlines what is to be expected of us. We can always go above and beyond and I think my SROs go above and beyond what's in this policy. But a lot of emphasis was put on the disciplinarian role and how we're seen in schools. And that's clearly defined in here that that is not our purpose as SROs, as disciplinarians, where they're in a different role to create, to create relationships, to be seen in a positive light. So it was important and especially now with the amount of efforts we have moving forward with police reform in the state and the creation of the new post system on the certification of police officers, just another step in that direction where our role is being clearly defined. And this is a policy that is being utilized statewide. And that seems to be the trend, creating policies that everybody adheres to, so there's not 365 different policies, because one could say, well, that's happening in Leamester, but not in Pittsburgh. Well, you know, we have a role. Pittsburgh Public Schools has a role, just like Leamester and Leamester Public Schools. So that's why it's a standardized MOA.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Chief, I want to commend you and your department and the other colleagues around the state for really addressing the issue because sometime I think, in the past, we've seen, you know, school personnel kind of get police officers to act as administrators, you know, to handle disciplinary issues that should be handled by the administrators. And so I'm glad to know that there's a document on record that says this is our role, this is what, this is what we're supposed to do, not this. You know what I mean? And also clearly making sure both sides understand that going forward. And, you know, there'll be times where, you know, obviously your staff will have to do some things, but I like how it's clearly defined now. There's no assumptions in there and there's no, oh, I think you should do this. No, this is what it says, this is what we'll do. You know, we'll do our best, like you've done over the years, do whatever it takes to, but within the confines of your understanding. And I appreciate the hard work that you and members and the chiefs of police around the state is doing to kind of address, especially in terms of reform and things like that and being transparent as much as you can without addressing these issues. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I just, Chief Martino, I'd just like to make my own personal comment. I've known Chief Martino for many, many years. He's a graduate of Pittsburgh High School, as many of his officers are graduates of Pittsburgh High School. And commend you for the leadership that you have shown for the Pittsburgh Police Department. I think we have one of the finest police departments in the state. Your work with community policing, work with the young people, just your leadership, it shows throughout your whole staff and how they treat the people and the citizens in Pittsburgh and it comes from your leadership and your command staff. So, thank you very much, Chief Martino.
You're most certainly welcome. And I will end it with this. I will continue to commit all my resources to that type of relationship with our school district. That is something that I feel extremely strong on. And I think just having a robust program like this, we're really buying stock in the future and creating relationships that we have yet to see happen at this point. And I'm just very fortunate to have this type of relationship with the superintendent and his staff.
Thank you. Any further questions, Chief or Lieutenant Howe?
No, if I can make one quick comment, just as I wanted to point something out that one of our SROs recently did, that you might not be aware of it, something else our SROs do that's not written in the MOU. Recently, we were made aware of a student, I'm not going to tell you the school out of privacy issues, but she was sleeping on a mattress that was infested with rats. And the rats tore out the mattress so the poor girl was sleeping on the springs. So she wasn't getting a good night's sleep. She went to the officer who she's comfortable with because of the rapport the officer has with the students at the school. And we're working on getting her a new bed and also getting the apartment cleaned up so she has a place where she can rest at night so she can get a good education and get the rest that she needs. So that's just another thing that our SROs are doing that might not be publicly known, but they're in the schools and they're forming them relationships that do last a lifetime and they do make a difference, especially for this poor girl.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And if any school committee member needs my contact information, Superintendent can, he has a million different ways to reach me. I know, Dr. Knight, you were looking for my information.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
And hopefully you received it all. But my information's an open book and if any of you need to reach out to me, you can most certainly go through the superintendent's office. My cell phone's on 24/7. So I am always accessible to the school committee if you have questions or concerns or comments.
So, thanks, Chief and Lieutenant Howe, before you leave. Lieutenant Howe, I think you're modest in your commentary tonight. I know you just shared one example and you went into much more detail at the Student Support Subcommittee. And really, that forum was the right forum to talk about this because what you are doing, and you gave several examples at that meeting, of how you work with our school staff to support our students. Again, you gave several examples to the Subcommittee members and we had a good, healthy discussion. So we're excited to have this agreement voted on tonight, fully approval. And I think just for contextual information, the local vocational tech school has already approved the MOU?
Yes, we've gone in transition because of the hierarchy change.
Sure.
But yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Next, Mr. Jokler, strategic plan?
Okay. Tonight with us, we have in-person Carrie Purcell, who is president and senior executive of Focus Schools. We have been working with Carrie for a little over two years. We actually started, I think it was right before the pandemic. And, you know, first, there were some, I think, maybe some trepidation or uncertainty as to how the work could be done in the world of being remote or virtually. And when, you know, Zoom was something that was unfamiliar to everybody, as was Google Hangout and probably any other platform, but those are the two that we use. And really, that remote model ended up being, I think, a And really, that remote model ended up being, I think, a key lifeline for not only the district but for several principals and schools who you were working with to make sure the focus remained on the student, again, during a very difficult time. You know, none of us have lived through a pandemic before, none of us were around in 1918. And, you know, as we emerge from this pandemic, you know, this year, we return to full in-person learning. And again, each year presents both a challenge and an opportunity. And as we talk about growing and evolving and, and as we'll talk about further of our values and how they ground us in our commitments, I thought I'd ask Carrie to come here before us tonight and talk a little bit about just the framing of how we came to do strategic planning and, you know, and then we'll, we'll take it from there. So Carrie, the podium or the desk is fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Jokela. Thank you, Mr. Stevens, for having me and nice to meet each and every one of you. Thank you for all you do in service of the students in Fitchburg Public Schools. So as the superintendent said, my name is Carrie Purcell and I've been here for a little over two years, trying to work myself out of a job, honestly, by building capacity in your leaders, your leaders at the central office, your leaders in the buildings, principal leaders, classroom leaders, to equip and empower them with the systems, structures, and knowledge of how to work smarter, not harder, for the students that we serve. With this idea that certainly all means all. And so every day that we drive into the parking lot, it's about serving all students in a way that meets them just where they're at and helps to move them forward. So a little over two and a half years ago, when we were trying to figure out how to get on Zoom and one of my very first meetings at Fitchburg High School, I accidentally had 100 people on the Zoom call and I disconnected the training right at the start. So that was my introduction to Fitchburg High School. Since then, I've learned how to use Zoom with some level of ease. And in between that hang-up and where we're at now, I'm really proud of the progress that not only the district leadership but also the school leadership has made in terms of sort of cleaning the plate. So my work with schools has specifically been around how do we use data to inspect what we expect? How do we celebrate what's working? How do we identify what's not working and how do we move forward? And so each school principal and his or her admin team, along with the instructional leadership teams at the school sites, meet two times a month to sort of examine the progress around high-quality teaching and learning and the equitable access that they're offering to students so that all students can be successful. And if you have the opportunity to go in buildings, you'll see evidence of that work in lots of the hallways and entryways. Their SWF may be proudly displayed, that's their school-wide instructional focus, they may have data up on the walls, they may have student work visible, all as a way to celebrate the growth for every student. So super proud of that work, but equally as, I'm proud of the work that the district leadership is doing in the middle of trying to figure out how to open school, close school, be remote, be not remote. They really committed to this idea of trying to identify what we like to call the North Star. So what is it that we want all students to know and be able to do upon graduation so that they can be valedictorian at Fitchburg State, so that they can go live the dreams that they've desired? How are we creating those opportunities? So we went through a process called strategic planning, but we like to take a little bit of a different approach to strategic planning because those of you who have been through strategic planning in your workplace may find that it becomes a dusty document upon completion, like it's like this 95-page document that's bound in a nice, you know, bounding material and no one ever looks at it again. So we've gone through a process of figuring out, how can this become a living document? The way we do business, the transparent piece of the work that allows everybody to lean into this process of ensuring that all means all. So on the screen, on either side of the room, you'll see this process that we're in the middle of. And I'm just going to explain the process to you and then I'm going to turn it back over to the superintendent who's going to show you some of the outcomes of these conversations. So first things first, the first thing we did as a district cabinet, and then it went out to a larger group of stakeholders, was we examined where we were at. So we did a little audit using a structured protocol, looking at things such as attendance data, staffing, assessment data, all sorts of data to say what is working, what is not working, and what shall we do about both. So that was the initial sort of conversation that took place at cabinet. But you can't stop there. So many schools and districts analyze data but never act on data. In order to have impact, we must act. So the second part was opening up the conversation to a large group of stakeholders, community stakeholders, students, staff, principals, the cabinet, school committee, et cetera, et cetera, to say, if we were to dream big, by 2025, what would we want for the students that we're serving? So what is that end goal? What do we want all students to know and be able to do? So now we know where we're at and where we hope to be. And the next step of the process then involved the work of members of FADCO, that's coaches and union people and district people and principals and assistant principals, to really then decide if this is what we want for students, what are the commitments that we're going to make? What are the goals we are going to set to hold ourselves accountable to changing our adult behavior to better serve the students that are in front of us? And so we're at that place now where we have the plan developed. We've turned it into a one-pager because we don't believe in 98-page strategic plans. If you can't read it in five minutes, it's not worth reading, right? So here's the vision, here's the, the theory of action, here are commitments, and here are our values. So that page, that one-pager will be released in the fall and we'll be sort of in this full implementation mode of our strategic plan. So steps four and five, we'll begin thinking about starting in the fall and that's really measuring the impact of our actions on student growth towards outcomes, as well as monitoring and adjusting the plan as needed. So this strategic plan is not going to be inked and it's not going to be put in stone because we're going to be able to say, oh, well, we need to make a quarter turn here because we're not quite meeting the needs of all students. So in other words, this is going to be a living document, this is going to be the story that we tell and our happily ever after ending is what we want all students to know and be able to do in 2025. And we want to show you and the community that we're making evident, or evidence, excuse me, making progress towards that goal every quarter or so so that we can adjust accordingly. So that's the story of the process, a little bit about what I'm doing in schools and in cabinet before I turn it back over to the superintendent. I know I talk very fast, so I'm going to pause and ask you if there's any questions, anything that I didn't say clearly that you'd like me to repeat, anything at all, I'm open to. Yes?
Are we able to meet with you or read these things or, you know, talk about what's happened so far as we go along?
We're going to give you an update right now?
Yes.
I mean more in detail. This is a, this is a general update. I, yes, you are available?
Oh, yes. You, yeah, Superintendent Jokela has my contact information. I'm available night, day, Saturdays, Sundays. I go to bed at 10:30, but other than that, I'm available anytime. It keeps getting earlier and earlier every birthday.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think, I think Carrie, maybe just, you've described the work that you've been doing with Fitchburg. I guess maybe just as some background, the work that you've done really across the country with similar type districts.
Oh, yeah, sure. So I currently work in seven districts in the Commonwealth. I've been doing this work for, I think it's 13 years, I'm, I'm not sure. And I came to do this work because I was a receiver of this work in an underperforming school and was able to turn the school around. So I believe in it so much, I don't do anything that I don't 1,000% believe in and I'm very committed to making a difference in the lives of students. So this work has taken me to Pennsylvania, I do a lot of work in California, a lot of work in the Midwest, specifically Ohio and Illinois, but the bulk of my work has been in the Commonwealth. And my very first job outside of the principalship took place right down the road. We did entire district turnaround in Worcester several years ago. So it's a pleasure to be here and a pleasure to do this work and you have an amazing district office team. Yes, sir.
Carrie, could you, could you give a little bit about your background, what you did?
Yes, oh, yes, of course. So I-
And I have heard this, but-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I have been an educator my entire life. My poor brothers had to play school with me from the time they were in diapers. I knew from that, when I was five years old, that I wanted to be an educator. So I was actually the first person in my family to graduate from college and my parents wanted me to go into business and so I dutifully did that route for one year and then I said, no, I think I'm changing my mind, I'm going to be an educator. So, starting in 1986, I started teaching when I was 12, so just do the math that way. I, I taught everything from kindergarten, I have a, a strong background in special education, working with students with behavior disorders and students that are emotionally disturbed and helping to support them. I became an assistant principal, a principal, a principal mentor. I've taught as an adjunct professor, leaders, and so my passion is around building capacity in leaders. And so I stayed in that job for 21 years until I was fully vested so that I could retire someday, right? And then I, I left that to come and do this work because, as I mentioned, I was asked by my superintendent to go to the lowest-performing elementary school in the city of Springfield, Illinois, and we were able to successfully turn the school around and had 83% of our students reading at grade level in three years. And the demographics of that school looked very similar to, you know, any school that we, that we might know. And it wasn't because of any magic potion, it was because we focused on knowing the students and helping that student go from where they're at today to that very next place tomorrow. So that's my story. Yes, ma'am.
What, what materials do, do you use? What's your core material that you use for instruction?
Well, now?
Yes?
Yes, all right. So we don't-
This is a strategic plan presentation, but I don't see any information about the information that you're using.
Okay, all right, yes. So our work is based around a framework of building capacity in leaders. So we don't provide any direct support in terms of the instructional pieces, like what is the teaching and learning going to look like in the classroom? We takes, we take leaders through a process of looking at data so that they could identify a school-wide instructional focus that they believe all students should know and be able to do.
But what's the name of the publications or the paper, what you use? And when you say we, I don't know if we is-
Oh, I'm sorry. So I work for-
Books, your, your material that you use?
Yeah, so it all comes through our company, Focus Schools, and we have writers who develop customized curriculum for PD sessions, for leaders, and I can share, you know, our framework with you because that will help sort of you to understand that piece.
So it's all focused leaders, did you say?
Focused schools.
That's the, the name of the business and publication?
The organization, yes. If you go to the website, you'll see a bunch of stuff and I'll get some stuff to the superintendent and he can share with you. All right, perfect.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie. I think it's, I think it's showtime for us now.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, yeah, we're ready to get started. So over the last year, I know at least on two occasions, I've presented a status and drafts of the strategic plan. So tonight is the official unveiling and there's a vote on the school committee agenda for an action item. It's actually the first action item. So the first thing that really grounds what we're trying to do, the work that Carrie has guided the district and schools is our theory of action. And although we've said it numerous times here, it's worth starting off with, and really it's a partnership of the staff, families, and community partner collaboratively to identify and remove barriers to personal growth and achievement. Then every student will be ready to learn and access high-quality core instruction and social emotional supports. So this is the foundation of the work that we are committed to every day. Okay, so the, during the last year, we've shared with, with you all the six commitments that we've identified. So tonight, the, we've reformatted the commitments, tried to make it a little bit more crisp and clear. So I'm, I may be squinting here because the font, which was a little bit bolder. So again, just go over them quickly. The curriculum that's accessible to and reflective of all students, and we'll go into a little bit more detail on each of these commitments as we go through the future slides. A district-wide tiered system of academic and social emotional supports. As Carrie just mentioned, and one thing I've spoken about, is staff development and diverse recruitment plan. We'll provide an update on where we're at on, on that front. Strategic and effective use of all resources. There's more to resources than just the budget. It's staffing, it's facilities, it's also the partnerships that we have with, you know, organizations like the police department and local nonprofit agencies. A sense of welcoming and belonging, belonging with students, parents, staff, and all members of the community. As Assistant Superintendent Thompson mentioned, we had a very successful farmerly day Saturday at South Street Elementary and, you know, I just have to say the, the overalls that Eva and John wore, I have envy, so, you know. Next year, we'll have to like come up with some more designer or some more breathable fabrics.
Yes, please.
Because clearly the denim is a little bit heavy, right? Especially when it's 85 degrees. And then lastly, what's, what's key, going back to the partnership, is community and stakeholder engagement. This is work that can't be done in a vacuum just by our educators or our students. It needs, it really takes a village. So last year, when we had our annual retreat with over 50 administrators up at Fitchburg High School on another warm day, we went through a, I guess a round robin type creation of values. And these five values have been shared with, with you on prior occasions and also internally with staff, teams. And really, in summary, being growth-focused, you know, all our, all our students can grow and achieve. That's, that's one of the core things that we believe in. And one of the, probably the most, maybe I would say controversial terms, but maybe misunderstood term is vulnerable. And that's really looking at ourselves and being honest. No organization is perfect and we're always trying to get better. So we're willing to talk about where we're at and how to improve. Trustworthy, again, when we talk about where we're at and where we need to improve, we have to be honest. Because honesty builds trust internally amongst our staff and also with our parents and our students. Adaptable, I think that's, you know, fairly self-evident, given all that we've gone through, the staff, the community, over the last two and a half years. We've changed models on several occasions, from full remote to hybrid to in-person, and we had to adjust the challenges along the way. Sometimes the transition was easy, sometimes it wasn't. But we tried to make it better at each stage in the, in the process over the last couple of years. And, and lastly, collaborative, we're all working together for the common goal to help all our students grow and achieve, all means all. Again, I'm going to sound probably like a broken record here, but all means all, every student, every day, no exception. This is our promise, is what we're committing to and by doing this, and again, going back to our theory of action, which is listed below, we'll fulfill our promise to Tia and the other 5,500 students here in Fitchburg Public Schools. So this is where we try to graphically share what we've been doing. FADCO is our full administrative council, who's on the team and the process that we've gone through over the last couple of years. And really, the, the commitments that we're making tonight, I'm really, really reaffirming them and formalizing them because we've talked about them now for a good part of the last year. We have the six commitments. They, they, they are coming into the strategic plan and they're based on our core values. And, you know, the FADCO participants at the bottom are our principals, our assistant principals, our student support specialists, our directors of curriculum, and also cabinet or central office folks. So this, this slide tries to summarize, it's a little bit busy, but, and it gets into a little bit of detail, but, you know, who have we, who have we shared the process with? bit of detail. But, you know, who have we shared the process with? Again, instructional leadership teams, school improvement councils. We've shared it with parent advisory councils. You know, how have we shared it? The agendas, you know, outreach, community liaisons. It's been posted through electronic mediums as well. And, you know, what we're trying to do is, again, sharing our best practices, again, how we're using the data cycles. You know, Mr. Thompson has, and we've updated the student support subcommittees and school committee in terms of where we're at with internal assessments like iReady, the progress that we're making, the work that still needs to be done. And again, just sharing the process and what we're trying to do with our focus, and we'll talk about more, is creating a welcoming and belonging environment. And as we talked about earlier, removing barriers. You know, our students face many barriers. Lieutenant Howe mentioned, I bear that one particular student is facing. We're trying to help our students achieve what they can achieve in terms of personal, intellectual, and growth. And also, as Carrie mentioned, one of the things that we've been doing, working with her outfit, Focus Schools, and also with another outfit called Future Management Systems, is building leadership breadth and depth. The days of the principal being the sole decider or sole responsibility for a school are gone. It's too big a job. The demands are too many. And really, it takes several people to carry the water to the village here. So. So I'm going to turn this slide over to Mr. Thompson as it starts going into a little bit of the action items that we've taken in terms of commitment number one, curriculum that's accessible to and reflective of all students. So, John?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Jokla. So as many of you know, one of, last year, we came to you to talk a little bit about updating our, I'm sorry, updating our elementary literacy curriculum, K-5. As you're aware, we're using an outdated curriculum that really didn't support the latest research. So we went with Holtland Mifflin's Into Reading as our core literacy program for our K-5 students. I'm very happy to say that there has been so much positive evidence to show that this program has been working in our district. We now have students reading at the kindergarten and first grade level. And we are going to reach our goal of all students very soon, reading at a third grade reading level, which is our goal for all our kids, so they can actually really dive into deeper texts. So we have really positive, I don't know why this keeps going in and out. My apologies. It must be the thunderstorm that's coming through. One of the things up here that is really evidence of what's happening is our fifth grade ELA curriculum has made a huge difference in grade five growth and achievement. This is a direct quote from our principals at the fifth grade level and our teachers at the fifth grade level. It's really happening. One of the things that I'm really happy to say is our teachers really have the materials now that they need to do their job, which they did not have before. They were pulling from all kinds of different resources. I am really happy to say that all our K-5 teachers are using the same materials now, which will be, is very, very important, as you know, when it comes to curriculum. Some of the other things that really is really big about this program is the supports for our EL and SED students, our special education students. Those were really lacking in our previous program, and those are embedded directly into our program, which is really needed. And the last thing that's really important, I think that was missing that we identified, was vocabulary instruction. Our previous program had no direct instruction in vocabulary. That is now happening on a daily basis for our students. So teachers have reported that they've seen a significant increase in students' vocabulary development. So it's just really great to see. So, you know, thank you for really committing the resources needed to purchase that program. It's benefiting our students. Just quickly, a few other updates that we've been making. We've updated our ELA curriculum at the middle school level to actually, to the current latest up-to-date version or addition. We're working on updating currently to the latest version of Eureka Squared. It's our, Eureka Math is our math program. We're going to be implementing the new updated version next year in grades K to nine. In addition to that, we still have our Open Sied pilot happening at the middle school and high school level, which is, Open Sied is a state curriculum or initiative that the state's putting out on science education. Because right now, there isn't really any high-quality materials out there for science. So the state has been working with an organization to really develop high-quality science curriculum. So that's happening right now. South Street, I'm sorry. Fitchburg is in the midst of it all and is actually one of the leaders in the state that's doing this work. So it's actually great to see. And our social studies curriculum, our social studies director, John Matarosian, has really been looking at identifying those resources that our middle school and high school teachers need to actually teach, the 2018 updated social studies frameworks. So he's done, formed a committee and has been working with teachers the last several months in middle and high school to actually look at what we're currently using, because that's been one content area that we kind of, that's been, we haven't invested in over the years. So we're putting money towards that as we continue to move forward. So it's kind of a high level of where we are within our curriculum right now. Any questions on that? Yep?
Yes. You mentioned FADCO, F-A-D-C-O. What is that?
Yeah. So FADCO is our full administrative council, which includes all the central office administration, all our principals, all our assistant principals, all our special education administrators, and our directors.
So it's a localized thing to this district?
It's Fitchburg's administrative.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Next slide.
Talk to TSS now. Take the next one.
Yeah. So our next one, our next commitment is a district-wide tiered system of academic and social emotional support. So one of the things that we've been looking at is really how are we responding to students' needs academically and also socio-emotionally. So we've been doing a lot of work on this to making sure we have the correct curriculum and the correct supports put in place. So one of the things that we rolled out this year was the DESA, which is a socio-emotional screener that looks at our students' socio-emotional needs. So we actually now have an assessment that we're using K to 12 for all our students. And we give that three times a year to see, you know, what are the socio-emotional needs of our students? And how do we meet their needs when it comes to that? So all our teachers do a survey on our students at the beginning of the year, in the middle of the year, and at the end of the year. And based on that survey, we provide the, you know, the supports that they need to be successful. So one of the things that the high school did was they looked at their CP classes and they eliminated that. So we're making sure that we're providing students with the best opportunities at all levels. We are also looking at, well, we're piloting some socio-emotional curriculum throughout the district. As you know, we continue to use responsive classroom. We're looking at, we've been using the Ruler approach, which is out of Yale University. We're also looking, we continue to implement second steps at the elementary school and steps to respect, which are socio-emotional curriculums for our students. So we're still implementing that throughout the district. And as you all know, based on the pandemic, we know that there's been increased socio-emotional needs for our students. So the district has been committed, last year, we added several clinical interventionist positions in the district to meet the needs. I think it was a total of seven throughout the district. And in addition to that, we're also looking at adding more this coming school year. So we're really looking at not just the academic needs of our students, but also the socio-emotional needs, because we need both, we have to look at both of those to make sure our students are successful. So that's kind of a high level of commitment, too.
So getting back to staff development, again, as Carrie Purcell mentioned, and as I mentioned earlier, developing our leadership team is really one of my top priorities. You know, we're doing that through a number of steps. This is just a summary of a half dozen of those actions. One is the Future Teachers Academy, again, enclosed in your school committee packet. This is a summary of the memorandum of understanding where our high school students can earn 12 college credits. So as Jim Walsh mentioned earlier, the person who was the valedictorian, they were able to start their journey at Fitchburg State while still at Fitchburg High School. And as we've talked about before with the Future Falcons Academy that we've run recently, both during February vacation and April vacation, and Mr. Walsh, I think, as you said at a prior school committee meeting, we need to introduce our students to college in middle school. We can't wait till junior or senior year to introduce them to Fitchburg State or any other school. So that relationship was finally codified and recorded. And we had a press event last week with the mayor and President Lepidus over at Fitchburg State. So we're looking to have a pipeline of our students going from Fitchburg High School to Fitchburg State University. There is scholarship help available, whether it be through the Alumni Association, as Mr. Stevens said. We've also raised funds philanthropically from the Wallace Foundation. And also, Fitchburg State provides work opportunities, as do Fitchburg Public Schools, for summer opportunities. And at the last school committee meeting, the school committee just increased the rates for people who want to work for us in the summer. So that's an excellent opportunity for future teachers. At a prior meeting, we unveiled the YouTube, or the video that is now posted on YouTube. It's not a YouTube video. It's our recruiting video, which, you know, highlights who our staff are and who our students are, and what a great place Fitchburg is to work and learn. So, you know, we've had very positive feedback on that. And I know some schools are looking at that template to have kind of an introductory video for each of their schools. You know, every year, we have a teacher mentorship program for new first-year teachers. In addition to that, for future years, we're offering the Skillful Teacher Training with, through John Safier. That's available to teachers who opt into that.
Yeah, in their second year or their third year. They need to complete this course by the end of their third year.
So over the last year, we became a member of Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. John Harmon has been our human resources director, has been our representative, has been attending not only meetings, but online, virtual, and in-person recruitment fairs. Again, the, there is a workforce shortage in many industries, and public education is no exception. And there have been many articles recently, and I think I've shared some with you in terms of the teacher shortage. And that's why it's so important to build this pipeline, as we're doing with Fitchburg State and more, which I'll talk about shortly. Again, we've shared with our staff diversity, belonging, inclusion, equity training with Dr. Darnes Amate Jackson. Several of you had participated in a workshop with Dr. Jackson early last fall. And lastly, just given the, you know, it's really pending wave of teacher retirement, and especially in districts like Fitchburg now with the support of the Student Opportunity Act, many districts are short-staffed. And like Fitchburg, we weren't able to fill all our positions this year. And principally, one of the biggest groups, or the group of positions that we weren't able to fill this year was paraprofessionals, teachers assistants. I think it was over 20 openings went unfilled this year. That challenge of hiring staff doesn't appear to be a one-year phenomenon. And that's why, you know, I've actually approached the commissioner's office about a potential teacher apprenticeship model. Tennessee just had one approved by the U.S. Department of Education. And the commissioner just responded recently that they are investigating some type of residency program. Districts across the Commonwealth are in, I won't say dire need, but have a major need for teachers in all subject areas, particularly English as a second language teachers, you know, the STEM, the math, science, technology, and also special education. Most recently, I attended a meeting with Senate President Karen Spilka. She was in town a few weeks ago, and Fitchburg State presented. And the number of students enrolled in there for special education has decreased by over 50% in the last six years. So for a group of educators that we need to hire more of, the pipeline is, as I've shared with some people, the metaphor of a 20-year-old kinked-up garden hose.
Bob, one question, sorry, superintendent, one question. Besides school springs.
Yep.
Where are we posting the polls for recruiting the teachers into the system?
Yeah. So we're, that is our primary source. We have, there's another source, and I can't remember the name of it. It's actually where our postings go automatically to colleges and universities. We signed up with over 50 universities, not only in New England, but across the country, including some historically black colleges, to have our postings go there.
Handshake.
Handshake. Thank you, John.
Repeat that?
Retrieval. There you go.
Can you say that a little louder?
Handshake.
Handshake.
Handshake. You know, in all honesty, handshake hasn't generated many referrals. And even with the career fairs that we've attended this calendar year, virtual and in-person, you know, the number of people who have followed up, you know, in person have been in single digits.
One last question.
Yep.
I'm not sure if it's there, because I, you know, wasn't looking at teachers. Do you have at the end of the application, at the end of the post, a statement such as, and if you don't, could we add something that says, "We encourage female and candidates of color to apply for these positions"? Do we have something like that?
I'd have to double-check what it says, if like we're an equal opportunity.
Yeah, the clause is under, that general statement, I think, is at the end of that.
Is there. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You mentioned Dr. Jackson. Could you tell us who she is, that you had done some work and had attended different?
Yep. Yep. Well, she is someone who speaks on diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. She's someone that has worked with the school department now for a little over a year and a half. Again, we engaged her and Focus Schools around the same time, although our trainings and sessions with her have been not as frequent, because it's a different type of engagement. So, and she's the person who facilitated the workshop with the school committee, which you could attend.
Right. I have had several people speak to me about that, about her program, in a concerned way. And so if we have the opportunity, I'd like to look at the materials and discuss it with you, too, another time.
That's fine. So this is a strategic and effective use of all resources. You know, Mr. Schalpho put this together. I don't know if you, Craig, you want to?
Sure.
Go past this, kind of the buckets that we're dealing with.
Yeah, this just kind of reiterates much of what Mr. Thompson and Mr. Jokla just spoke about. All of these initiatives take money, obviously. So we have a commitment under staffing. We've added our curriculum directors. We've added a number of teaching positions across the district, as well as around SEL staff. We mentioned the seven clinical interventionists that we hired, and then support staff. Under professional development, again, highlighting the work with Carrie Purcell and leadership, our co-teaching commitment for special education and SEL, and curriculum implementation, which much of that, some of that is driven by the product that we actually, the reading program that we purchased. So that was part and parcel of the actual program. The diversity training, which we were just speaking of, and then the Skillful Teacher with John Safier, that was also just mentioned. As far as the curriculum, again, you know, the reading program, we're updating our math from Eureka to Eureka Squared math. So there's another cost. And we'll be looking at district-wide upgrading our social studies curriculum, which has not been done in a number of years. And again, with our assessments, we talked about iReady. Mr. Thompson discussed a little bit about the DESA and the SEL assessments that we're using district-wide. And then Galileo is another platform that we can use to generate assessments. of suicide, responsive classroom, DESA, and then Edgenuity, which is again, another online platform that we can utilize for for students to take actually take courses on.
And they have a actually SEL component to that, too, that the high school's piloting right now.
And then under facilities, again, working with the SIR funds that we have and local capital around HVAC, replacing roofs, classroom furniture, and then the MSBA projects that we have ongoing for the new Crocker Elementary School, the potential project for funding new windows and and doors and shades at Long Joe Middle School. We have submitted an application for new boilers at Long Joe Middle School. And then we will have something on our agenda each year to apply for these accelerated repair programs at 80% reimbursement through MSBA. The one thing that's not noted here, but it's I will talk to it in the budget presentation is just investment in technology. The amount of work that Eileen Spinney has done, our Director of Technology, and her team, just addressing the shortfalls and the needs around the pandemic and online learning and everything that we wore, I believe, seven to 12, one-to-one, we're now K to 12. And this just continues, whether it's through our E-rate investments and also through our emergency connectivity funding, and that is supplying hotspots to families that don't have internet, and also supplying home computers for families so they're not transporting them back and forth to school, that they actually have something at their house that they can use. So, again, this goes along with the strategic planning. Everything that we do needs to be budgeted for and needs to be sustainable over time. So that is our commitment.
Okay, so moving on to our fifth commitment, which is sense of welcoming and belonging with students, parents, staff, and all members of the community. Again, as we emerge from this pandemic, you know, building and rebuilding trusts with the community is a high priority for us. You know, there's been a big interruption from the normal flow that people were accustomed to, and a lot of dysregulation or deregulation has occurred, not only of students, but also staff. And we're working to get back to and how to adapt with the new reality that we find ourselves in. So the screen continues to blink, but fortunately, my laptop now has connection. Maybe it's related, I don't know. But, you know, just some of the things that we've we've been doing to try to foster that is, you know, having a student ambassador, helping new students enroll, having adult ESL classes for the community. We've had, how many sessions have we had now, Eva?
Seven.
Seven sessions, so, okay. And and we have a kind of a certificate ceremony every couple months or so.
Ten weeks.
And really, those those events are as happy as almost any major life event that I've ever attended. And to see, really, the children of the of the adults receiving the certificates, the pride of the children for their parents, right? It's a huge milestone. And again, it's helping some of our parents, you know, number one, better communicate with the schools, with their teachers, the principals. But also, there have been parents who have admitted how they're with their new and improved English skills, they've been able to get better jobs. So so we're really having an impact in the community. So again, I want to acknowledge and thank Eva and Luisa Fernandez for for running that. That's that's really become, I think, a core program that we started, again, everything seemed to start right in the March 2020, right?
That's true.
Yeah. Again, you know, another community type events, but really just supporting our community too, has been the Fitchburg Families First partnership with the Fitchburg Art Museum. We've provided art supply, you know, and market basket gift cards and and books to the community. And that's really been also another fantastic thing to see over the last year. So, lastly, on terms of commitments, is really community and stakeholder engagement. Over the last year, we've shared with the school committee, I think on two occasions, surveys that we have done of students and/or the community in terms of, again, taking that feedback and how we can be more responsive and how we can be better as a school district. You know, sometimes we've learned from surveys how how we communicate with our parents. Just as an example, last survey we did through Fitchburg High, we originally sent it out by email through Principal Rocha's email. I think through email, we had four responses. We said, okay, if we have to try a new approach, tried Instagram. Through Instagram, we discovered that the Google Forms and Instagram, there's some kludge-iness. We tweaked it, it worked, so then we had over 140 responses and collected some good good feedback from that. Also, you know, Fitchburg High School Student Advisory Council, again, has surveyed it. Those those students are about, I think, 30 to 40 members there. And again, the students sharing with, you know, Fitchburg High School leadership, what some of the challenges they see in the school, in the community, what has impacted our students, and in terms of, you know, the the adjustment from normal that remote learning caused and kind of trying to get back to normal, what assistance students can can benefit from. So it's been great to hear our students express their voice and what the needs are. You know, lastly, again, this is this is everybody in the district trying to create a welcoming and belonging environment. So whether it's, you know, clerical staff at the front desk, paraprofessionals, our bus drivers, although the bus drivers are technically first student employees and staff at all levels. This is Fitchburg Public Schools, and the key word here is public. It's it's community schools. So everyone has a stake in it. And again, the thing that we've tried to do, and again, we really tried different ways to start it or continue it and grow it, is getting the feedback of our students and parents over the last couple of years. And we'll continue to do that to try to try to make Fitchburg Public Schools better at all levels. So, lastly, this is the kind of the the closing on, although not necessarily the the closure slide, but just, you know, the question was asked, who is FADCO? Mr. Reynolds asked. So here, you know, here's just the the groupings of the staff, the student support specialists, which are special education leaders. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but, you know, we're looking to add evaluation team leaders to help support some of the compliance paperwork and parent communication, given the level of, you know, students who have been identified, you know, who need individual education plans. Assistant principals, creating, posting a visual version of the strategic plan, and also really training them to become potential future leaders. Principals, again, trying to have students set goals and own the goals across all school levels. The directors are meeting in the schools frequently. Mr. Thompson, you could probably add a couple.
Yeah, so they're in the they're in their schools, and they're working with the groups of teachers based on their content level expertise. So they've been doing a lot of curriculum planning with the teachers, lesson planning, based on the standards. They've been doing that, and they also been going in and doing walkthroughs in the buildings and giving teachers direct feedback to improve their outcomes for our students. So they're in there on a daily basis.
And lastly, you know, one of the bold next steps, and really one of the things that we've provided periodic updates over the last year, has been our redistricting effort. And as we've said, once we know the information, we'll share the information. Eva Kelly will come before the school committee tonight to give just another update as to where we're at with a little bit, some more technical details. And also, we have a a school leadership announcement that we can include as part of that. Yes, we do. So that's where we're at. And again, kind of, we want to continue to listen to listen to all stakeholders involved. So and that's that's that portion of tonight's agenda. I don't know if there are any questions before we move on to redistricting?
There's a point at which I'd like to make a statement, and I don't, it may be now due to the information that we're considering, or it might be later, but I would like the secretary to lodge, tell the mayor, the head of this committee, that I lodge a complaint against my free right to speak when I requested definitions of terms used in what we were discussing. Please note that. I was told I was out of order by asking for definitions.
Okay.
Continue.
Continue.
John, can you bring up?
I need to ask the our vice chairman person if how I should proceed in including this.
Just just put it in the notes of what she said.
All right.
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
Eva, do you want to come to the table? So I guess I can say welcome back.
Yes. Thank you for having me.
Eva, Eva Kelly, I'll let you introduce yourself, Eva, but really, just as we've said at the beginning of all of these redistricting presentations, they've been grounded in what's best for our students to grow and achieve. Again, the some of the the big announcements that we're making as part of this are part of the plan, is the Early Childhood Center at South Street, returning the fifth graders to the elementary school from middle school, and converting McKay from a K through eight school to a grade one through five elementary school. Okay, so.
These are the district maps. You've seen these before, and we've talked about them. So this is the middle school map, the way we divided the city. And I know it's really small, so if you have questions, don't hesitate to contact me. I'll tell you whatever questions you have. I can answer them, okay? Do you want to do the the next slide?
What, I guess I'm curious to know what formula or format you use to divide the city?
So.
Was it economic lines or was it something?
No, it's based, so what we do, we have a map system that we can see where every student lives. So then we're trying to divide by number, class size, making the class sizes consistent across the district. So even though the maps, the blue portion is Memorial, the red is Long Joe, we have some shared areas for heavily populated areas, for example, Meadowbrook, Lee T., that area we could potentially send students to one or eat or the other school. But we did it so that we could, we made Long Joe a little larger. They received two of every grade level, sixth, seventh, and eighth. So and Memorial received one of each grade level, sixth, seventh, and eighth. So I know it doesn't look, it doesn't look like the numbers are even. It is, and I'd be happy, honest to God, Donna Hildreth and I would be happy to sit down with you and go through the whole thing.
I'm not concerned with with equal number, because I know we're never going to get to equal number, as opposed to distribution, distribution of content, distribution of opportunities, things like that. So those are the things that are most on my mind, because, you know, I know that you guys are doing the best you can, and I appreciate all the hard work you're doing. And but I just, you know, that would be a couple of my concerns.
Yeah, I can answer some. So distribution of content-wise, we have the same programs in both that will be both of our middle schools, both at Memorial and both at Long Joe.
So curriculum, after-school opportunities.
Curriculums are the same. Opportunities are the same.
Specials.
Specials are the same.
ESL, like.
Things the same.
Services, they're going to get the same.
What about was parental input considered in terms of?
So what we did, do you want, it's coming. Do you want to hear about?
Eva, I think it goes back many, many years, John. We had many elementary schools at one time. They were all made middle neighborhood schools. And as it started to change, you had Rhengold Elementary School.
Right.
And you had South Street School, and McKay School, and Crocker School. And that's where kind of the districts kind of fell into. I mean, you take like Rhengold School, Rhengold School in the Clegon area, that was made up of the Mary Markham School, which was right up next to St. Joseph's School, Ashburnham Street School, Warche's Street School. And they tried to pull them all together. And that's so you kind of wound up with four districts. And that's kind of still what we have. Now you're trying to break those four districts down into it'll be three elementary schools and a kindergarten preschool center.
Yes. We did go through that time when parents could choose, but we we stopped doing that several years ago.
Several years ago.
Right, yeah, because the diversity and the income levels of our community is pretty consistent across the board, so.
But see, when I say, I guess my concern is the ones that are economically disadvantaged and things like that, making sure 70% of them don't end up in, you know what I mean? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So we make sure we kind of keep that in our in the back of our mind in terms of, you know, redistricting.
And I can show you a breakdown of all those numbers if you want to meet with me. I'd be glad to do that anytime.
I believe you.
Breakdowns are pretty even now, though, aren't they, Eva?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they are, yeah.
And they didn't always, they weren't always that way.
Right, right.
Because at one time, we were, we had school choice, and that was, we had to do that.
Right.
It was called a controlled school choice to try and, when I was principal of at Rhengold, we were like at maybe 20% minority. And another school, maybe 60%.
Right.
We don't want that.
So that's been taken care of.
Thank you.
At some point, I will make an appointment so that you can show me, because I need to learn all this.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is the elementary map. So the blue is Rhengold, green is McKay, I mean, I'm sorry, green is Crocker, and red is McKay. So like, like, the blue area is larger because it's less populated in that area. That's why you see the, yeah, so, because like I said, we can see the map, we see where everyone's living, and then we're trying to keep the numbers even. So that whole upper left-hand corner, there's hardly any students living up there.
That's a lot of rural area.
That's why, like, and you see like those zigzag lines, because we were really trying to even out the numbers, not only the numbers at the school, but class by grade and class sizes to make them as consistent as we could. And again, there are there are areas where you could be assigned, because as you know, we get a large number of students in and out of the district every year. So the areas that we can assign to multiple schools are heavily trafficked areas of movement for our students, yeah. So this is special education classroom distribution, right?
And do we, is there an update from the last?
I did, I fixed it, yeah, it's all set.
But can you say what?
So that was the pathways. We are putting a pathways classroom at Memorial this year, this coming year. These are the school times. They haven't changed.
These are already.
Yeah, they're already been voted on and everything, yeah, right. And I think the next one is the preschool, which I don't think those were firm until the next slide.
Sorry, just the next slide.
The next slide is.
Craig interrupted me.
That's okay. These are the preschool start and end times. So we tried to make it so they weren't starting and ending at the same time as the kindergarten, because they're all going to be together at South Street School.
And this is new information here.
This is new information, yeah. So you see kindergarten starts at 8:20. That is not new, but we're starting pre-K a little bit earlier at 8:00, ends at 10:30. And PM pre-K starts at 11:30 and Z2.
Question?
Yeah.
Yes, in terms.
These are the preschool start and end times, so we tried to make it so they weren't starting and ending at the same time as the kindergarten, because they're all going to be together at South Street School.
And this is new information here.
This is new information, yeah. So you see kindergarten starts at 8:20, that is not new, but we're starting pre-K a little bit earlier at eight, ends at 10:30, and PM pre-K starts at 11:30 and ends at two.
Question?
Yeah.
Yes, in terms, who determines which pre-K their child would attend, in the morning, afternoon, can some students go to both sessions?
You know what I get to say is that's totally the special ed department.
Okay.
Don't have any control over that at all.
It depends on student need.
Okay.
What their IEP calls for.
Okay.
It also depends on numbers, too, like how many we have in the AM and how many we have in the PM, so, and there's some students who do both depending on their needs.
Yep.
But it's not me.
It's not Eva.
So, question, would a parent, would a placement be considered based upon parental needs, I work in the morning, you know what I mean, and really need my kid to get an AM program, or I work in the afternoon, you know what I mean, is that part of consideration or no?
I have no idea.
Yeah, I don't have.
I can get that information for you.
We'll have to get back to on that time, I mean, I think, I think we do our best to accommodate the parents' needs and students' needs.
I didn't know if that was a part of the process.
No, it's a good question, yeah, yeah.
I think sometime in the past, if you did the AM first half of the year and you did the PM the second half of the year. And then they made accommodations if they could.
Right, right.
I'm not sure, though, I'll get back to you on.
So one thing I do know, I can tell you Tom, is that some of our students go, may have morning programs out of district that they go to, they may go to a service, so I mean, it all really depends on their schedule and the needs of the students and their individual education plans.
Thank you.
Yep. Bob? So, I just thought I'd share an update to the school leadership of the K through eight schools here that are involved with the redistricting. So I recently informed you of some movements within our schools. First, at McKay Elementary School, Suzanne Tingas, who's current principal at South Street Elementary, will be moving over to McKay next year along with members of, many members of South Street and the South Street Leadership Team. At Long's Joe, Mark Pierce, who's currently the McKay Arts Academy, which is a K through eight school, will be moving over to Long's Joe to become the principal of that new six through eight middle school, not five through eight, as grade five is returning to the elementaries. And the announcement of the evening is that Monica Poitras will be joining us at South Street Early Learning Center as the principal, so.
Is she a former?
She is a former principal of South Street Elementary, she's been at Nelson Place Elementary School in Worcester, has been extreme, was extremely involved with an MSBA project there, so we can talk school furniture if we need to have a resource as we're moving forward with Crocker, but also has extensive experience with, with elementary, but also her passion is pre-K, K, and this was really an ideal opportunity that she was looking for, and she's thrilled to return to Fitchburg and we're thrilled to have her, so.
I am pleased for her to come back.
Yeah.
I was so, I hated to ever lose her, she was just a.
So, you know, that Thomas Wolfe book, You Can't Go Home Again, well, you can go home again, so.
You can.
You can, anyway, you read that.
We don't usually get them back from Worcester.
Yeah, yeah. So Casey Bolak will remain the principal over at Crocker Elementary School, Justin Sparks remains as the principal of Rhengold Elementary School, and last but not least, Brittany Lavoy will remain as the principal of Memorial Middle School, which should also be in parentheses as six through eight, so, just have to update that, fix that. So Eva, back to you on the student assignment letters.
So the student assignment letters went out, we sent out 4,000 letters on May 10th. So if anyone that's listening or you hear of anyone that hasn't gotten a letter, please have them call enrollment, because that means we have the wrong address for them, so we need to figure out where they're staying. And we are getting calls and we are receiving emails and we're distributing the appeal forms and we're going to set the process of going through those to see who we can accommodate for the fall.
Good question, I guess related to this, so when the school year begins, if a student who's going to elementary school lives in the district, it would be Crocker Elementary, and then the family moves mid-year and moves to a different district, how will that, or would it affect that student's changing from Crocker to Rhengold, no, yes?
So, we've talked about this a lot in enrollment with the staff, and there's a couple of things we could do, right, we could, if we find out, because sometimes, quite often they move, we don't even know, because the parent gets them to school and doesn't change their address. We are, can absolutely move them to their new school at any point, elementary, we can move them at any point, when we're talking about middle school, we try to wait for the semester break, you know? Or they could, if they have transportation, you know, if someone's bringing them, they can stay there till the end of the year and then transfer to their new school, so we'll talk through that with the families case by case, right, as it comes up.
Thank you Eva.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't provide transportation cross district.
We do not. We used to, we do not, that was several years ago, that we changed that, yeah. So, yeah, if you hear of anyone, just have them call me. Do you want to talk about staff assignment?
Yeah, so the majority of the staff have been placed, we, I would say about 99% of staff have been placed, we still have a few guidance and special education staff that we need to give an assignment to, so we're working on that. And the process, if a, if a, if a staff member was placed at a school or at a grade level that they did not want to go to and they feel that their knowledge or their expertise may be appropriate for another position, all staff can apply for open positions in the district and interview, and we will be granting them an interview for any open position in the district, which we've been doing that for the last several weeks, we've been interviewing several staff members, so.
Okay, and what's on probably most staff's mind, aside from the half-day days, packing days, which we've announced for June 15th, 16th, and 17th, are the moving details and boxes and dumpsters, Craig, so, what better way to wrap this?
So we do have dumpsters available at all schools for any purging or anything that, unwanted materials that are in classrooms now that need to be thrown away, we've been, we've met with our moving company several times, they have provided us with boxes that have been delivered to all schools now, and we'll be delivering, we're starting with each teacher to receive ten, a bundle of 10 boxes, we overpurchased boxes just to make sure that we would have enough, and the moving company has allowed us, they will purchase those back from us, whatever we don't use, so we'll sat with 10 and as teachers need more, we can provide them additional boxes to move forward. So, some teachers have already asked, some teachers have received them, others have said, well, I don't want them until the end of the year, and so we'll try to accommodate the needs of the classroom. Labels will be provided as the final placements are, are done, because we don't want to move folks across district and they take a position in another building, we'll be searching for their boxes all over the district, so that will probably be the last thing that we do is provide, you know, once we have all the staffing placements finalized, we'll provide them with the labels to go on the boxes. We'll be starting the moving process as of July 5th, actually in contact with the moving company today, they're asking if they can come in district earlier and do some of the in district, or the in-school move, the intern move, so we have about 200 moves, and that is internal moves within a building and external moves across the district. So there's a lot of moving pieces to this, Joe Richardson and Marcus Barron have been doing a wonderful job through school building maintenance and, and their teams at each building, so that's where we're moving, we're also working with our furniture vendors, and we'll be replacing furniture at Rhengold, at McKay, and at the South Street Elementary or Early Learning Center, as well as offsetting the fifth grade furniture for Crocker, because we don't think that their pre-K and K furniture is going to fit the fifth grader. So we're, we're in the process of finalizing, and we hope to have that order out this week, early this week.
What is SBM?
School Building Maintenance.
Okay, okay, and then, are there many teachers who will be staying in the classroom they're in now?
It's, it's different building by building, so at South Street, all of our pre-K, K are staying, all one through four will be leaving, and same thing at McKay, you know, pre-K, K is moving, and then sixth, seventh, and eighth is moving. So it impacts each school a little differently.
Might make a difference if, what the principal's needs are, how he's going to.
And because of, because of the placement of the higher grades, particularly in the elementary schools, that the schools are doing internal moves so that they can make sure that all of their pods or cluster, grade clusters are located in the same area.
Dr. Knight?
Yes, you're, many, many years ago, we used to have teachers that they fixed their bulletin boards and they left it like that for 10, five, 10 years, do we have that situation now, and if we do, is there any way we could encourage them to, you know, to redo that, you know, just so that it looks much better for the students that are coming in to be, you know?
Think kind of up the building principal to check the classrooms.
And typically, I should say, most of the bulletin boards are switched out, or at least taken down for summer cleaning as well, anything in the classroom, but we can certainly make a note of that to make sure that that message.
I think what some teachers like to do, too, if you get elementary, that when they're leaving in June, they might put up their September bulletin board and then they cover it over.
That is fine.
With, you know, so that they, they're all set.
What I'm talking about is the, the ones that put up stuff there.
I know, I know what you mean, yes. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, quick question, I don't know if it's for Mr. Schala or or Mr. Jopla, has there been a staff fallout, like staff saying, you know what, I just, because people just don't like change, you know, serious change like that, a lot of people, so you experience a number of teachers saying, I'm just going to go get a job somewhere else, or no, they're just rolling with the flow?
So, I guess nobody likes change at some level, right, we're all creatures of habit, so are there, you know, there's probably some, I'll say some groups of kindergarten teachers who have expressed some concerns, leaving, again, been in school for many years, and I think also, you know, there are some fifth grade teachers who have expressed some concerns about being, you know, instead of just a content teacher, being in one classroom all the time, but we, we haven't heard, I don't know if we've heard any requests that are saying, you know, this just doesn't work for me and I'm, you know, going someplace else.
So I was thinking about that with the, with the staff shortage that we already had, you know, if you have 10 or 15 decide, you know, I didn't just.
Good question, not yet. Or not, not the where, where, all right, I don't know, right.
Might be some teachers available from Brookline right now.
Yeah, maybe. So I don't know.
One last thing, and of course, if it's the, the case that the teachers need new supplies, you know, we direct them to the principal, as I was telling before, so that they can get the new supplies for the bulletin boards.
Yeah, I mean, we have plenty of funds for supplies, and I think, you know, and I guess I'm looking at Craig as, you know, we have just last slide on furniture, but whether, so whether it be furniture or supplies, you know, there's ample resources, I think now, just the issue that I think we're experiencing like everybody else, is perhaps some supply, potential supply chain issues and delays on certain things, but I don't know, I don't know if that drills down to the supply level, Craig.
It certainly can, and today we purchased another $120,000 worth of Chromebooks because we, they were in stock and available and what we needed, so we grabbed them while they were there, so I think all the departments are being pretty proactive, understanding that the supply chain for some items may, there could be a delay, and that's why we're so anxious to get the furniture supply order in so that we're ready to, to roll, you know, come next school year. But as far as other supplies and other needs, they'll work with the building principals, those requests will come in and we'll fill them as we always do, again, we have ester funds available to support teaching and learning, so, you know, we'll continue to work with either, you know, mostly building principals and the departments of what their needs are.
Supplies, if anybody doesn't have supplies, ask your principal, I've heard that over the years, we don't have supplies, we have supplies, ask your principals, I have seen many storerooms loaded with supplies and people saying, oh, we don't have, we do have them, they're, you know, you have to ask.
But there is a real supply shortage in some areas with some items that there is a delay.
That could happen, but I'm talking historically, that, we've heard that, you know, and we do, and I've gone to storerooms and the supplies are there, so, ask, and I know Craig will try to get them, if, if we're out, we'll try to get them, like he did with the PPE, he did an outstanding job supplying the whole system, thank you Craig.
Any other questions on redistricting?
Thank you Eva.
Thank you Eva. So I feel like we're almost like at the halftime of, you know, I'll just invoke the Celtics Milwaukee Bucks here, because we do have a whole other budget presentation, but maybe just to rest our eyes from the big TVs on either end of the, the room here, maybe just going back to items listed on the superintendent's report, I think I provided a summary of the Fitchburg State, Fitchburg Public Schools Memorandum of Understanding, a copy of which was previously sent to you, and again, as we heard earlier from Mr. Walsh, case point example of why that's, that's helpful, and again, we're trying to address the teacher shortage, that really from a K through 16 perspective. Tonight, we also have, I forgot the name of the solar power company, Craig?
Byron Woodman here, he presented at our last meeting as an action item this evening to sign the actual letter of intent for us to move forward, the purchase agreement for the Fitchburg High School canopies, Byron is here because there's been infiltr transparency over the, of course, we're living in a very volatile time, the incentives shift and move and the rate for power also has changed, the good news is, there are two scenarios that we're looking at for the canopies at Fitchburg High School, so if we can get in, and I'll try to capture this Byron, if they have questions, we'll send it to you, but if we get into a block five incentive, our incentives over the 25 years will actually increase to $1.3 million from what it was at 1.2. If we get into a block six incentive, then that will drop down closer to the original number that we were talking about at 1.2, so these, these shifting times, so that's why we're trying to get this project in quickly so that we can get in under the block five incentive program. But either way, it's going to be very similar to what we had presented and Byron had presented to us as a committee, so we're looking at about a 1.2 to 1.3 million dollar savings over the 25-year lifespan of that project.
So determining whether in block five or block six is more of a, a time issue when we agree to the memorandum, when we say yes, it's a go?
It's when, it's when the incentives are awarded, so, D O E R. Byron, why don't you come right up? Oh, I'm sorry.
I have, I, you know, let me share my screen as well. I had this ready just in case.
The incentives are awarded on a first come, first served basis, and it's, the Commonwealth wants to award the early adopters, and there's a slight decrease in award, so if you're assuming a block five award, it's, the incentives are a little bit better and so the savings to the city are a little bit better. And so, the letter of intent enables us to file for the incentive and also file with Unitil for the interconnection application, and so that's, that's the trigger event, or that's why the timing of the LOI is important, is because it enables us to secure the earlier awards. We are actively in block five right now, and there are projects pending, and so Long Stro actually did get the block five award, but this is coming on after, after that, obviously, and so, the way that it looks, you don't know how many of the pending projects are actually going to qualify for the award, so that's why I put block five or block six, and, and both of them are, are fairly strong awards, so, thank you.
And this was the original slide, and then Byron provided us with kind of a comparison what the incentives were for block five or block six.
Okay, so just to, just to clarify, the block. Okay, so just to, just to clarify, the block, the, the lower block there, for April 25th, the savings there, just to clarify, the savings there were 791,000. And that assumed, just to, so that everybody's clear on, on how it worked, one of the big changes was, two, two really big changes. One is the price of grid tied electricity is going up significantly. So you're currently buying at a little over nine cents. And when you go, if you were to go back out to grid right now and buy energy, the supply that you'd be buying is about 13 cents. And so that, that was a change that we became aware of since the last presentation. The other piece of it is that the incentive award was a little bit lower and the cost of the canopy we got pricing in was a little bit higher. So what you'll see is, sorry, I'm walking around here. But so, this eye chart, but what you'll see right here is the PPA rate went from 13.7 up to, if we're Block Eight, it's 15.7, or Block Six, 16.3. But the cost for electricity also went up greater than that. So the net benefit is we went from 781 to 1.3 million for Block Five and 1.2 million for Block Six. And that's, that's a, what we consider to be a highly likely scenario. When the system actually comes online next year, you will have already done your next energy procurement. And so you're, you, when it's online, you will have already experienced that rate increase. And so the slide, the first slide, Craig, is, is the Block Six summary. So that assumes the Block Six award is received, and that's the 1.2 million.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Ms. Reynolds?
When you were here before, I think that the, there was a lot of talk about getting permission or getting whatever you needed to get from Unitil. I think that was what you were waiting on. Have you received whatever it is that's necessary?
No. So that's the letter of intent, which is the document that would be voted on being signed, essentially is required or autho, it's required for us to be able to submit for the incentive program because DOER and Unitil both need to know that the host, in this case, the city of Fitchburg, is A, aware of the project and B, supportive of the project at the time that we file. And so the letter of intent is the way we communicate that to DOER.
Who's waiting for whom?
So, so assuming the vote is, is passed, then when the LOI is signed, then we'll be able to submit the award and, and secure either the Block Five or Block Six.
And do we enter a waiting line to?
Yes, there's a queue.
A queue?
And so there's a queue with DOER at the Commonwealth, and then there's also, just given the size of the project, there'd likely be, well, there's certainly gonna be a preliminary and there may be a further, you know, study at the Unitil level as well.
And what held up the LOI? I thought that we were all on board going forward for this. What held that up?
No, I think it's, it's just the formality, I think, of signing.
The vote to move forward with this project is, is for the school committee to vote this evening for the letter of intent to move forward. It is a formality, but because of the changes that we had discussed this evening from the last presentation, we thought it was important to share the new numbers.
And will it change again even if we sign an LOI at this point?
If, if you do sign the LOI between now and when the project is built, we're gonna be doing further engineering on the system, which includes the, the geotech studies. So in, in that northern parking lot, it's a sloped northern parking lot, the flat parking lot, which is the teachers' lot, we don't know whatever we find under the soil, but that does determine the depths of the piles that you go into the earth. And, and that will inform the overall project cost. It's also possible that through Unitil, they may need some system upgrades. So in the event of either system upgrades or unexpected, bless you, unexpected like geotech work that would be incorporated into the overall project cost that would inform the PPA rate. So we're advancing with the investigation stages, but this is a very, it should be a very tight forecast for where we'll come out at the end of the, the project.
Mr. Yost?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Quick question, is the incentive program, are they guaranteed or competitive?
Yeah, once the incentive is, is awarded, it's locked in for a 20-year term.
And I'm saying to get the incentive?
Yeah, you're guarantee.
Process is guaranteed?
Yeah, we would, we would be receiving an award, we just don't, we just don't know what award we'd be receiving.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, but the same LOI goes to both places if there's two different places, or is it the same place that awards Five or Six?
Oh, so the LOI actually has the Block Five, the Block Five and the Block Six price in the document? That's a good question.
Thank you. Just continue. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sir, I wanted to say you have remarkable patience.
I love this. I'm inspired by, by the committee, truly, yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So the next item we have on the agenda is really a housekeeping scheduling matter about the, this year's school committee meeting, really the last meeting in June. After tonight, we are scheduled to meet on June 6th, and that'll be the final budget But we had a TBA, or actually, we had a meeting scheduled for June 20th, and prior to, that was put in place, I think, prior before the contracts were finalized and recognition of the Juneteenth holiday, which will happen on Monday, June 20th. So I'm actually here to just propose or help facilitate, does the school committee want to meet? And as City Council meets on Tuesday nights, Tuesday nights are not available, so I have, I think, three dates that, for consideration. And they would be June 22nd, which is a Wednesday night, June 23rd, which is a Thursday night, or the last Monday of June, June 27th.
I'd like Wednesday.
Anybody? I prefer the Monday, the 27th. I don't know what.
Sounds good.
I prefer Monday, the 27th.
Keep it a Monday.
Yeah. So is it?
We have a motion then for the final meeting?
I can make a motion that we hold a meeting June 27th?
Click on it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-seventh it is. Yep. Thank you. Then lastly, looking ahead to, let's, let's do this in advance this time, to June of '23. Let's look at the last meeting date in June of '23, which Juneteenth falls on the Monday, so the holiday would be observed on June 19th. So again, assuming the City Council holds to its calendar, would we want to?
Either the 26th?
Either the 26th or perhaps the 12th? Would we wanna meet, again, the 12, I guess, just looking at the calendar, the 12th, the 21st, the 22nd, or the 26th? So it'd either be two Mondays or Wednesday and Thursday?
I like the, I like the Monday night, keeping it, because even the building sometime is used by other groups. And I don't like the 12th because that'll be before graduation, before school is out. I like the, the end date, kinda wrap up the school year.
So we're looking at changing the last, to be determined to Monday, June 26th? Is that?
Correct. That's what.
For next.
For next year, June of '23.
Next year.
Next year, yes. Do we need a motion to do that, or?
So moved.
Motion to meet on Monday, June 26, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
So as I said, taking care of some of that logistical scheduling was like halftime. So now the second half begins, and I, I promise it'll be a little bit shorter than the first half, the two presentations. I'll, I'll try to promise that. So tonight, we have the first budget, first reading of the FY '23 school budget. I'll start, I'll start it off and then Mr. Shalfo will pick up the ball here, if I can continue to use the basketball metaphor here, for the, the fourth quarter, so to speak. So again, we, we just went over the strategic plan tonight. Again, our theory, theory of action and really a summary of the commitments, the six commitments that we had included in that. This is just what we've been sharing up until this evening. Again, the curriculum that's accessible to and reflective of all students, tiered system of academic and social emotional support district-wide, the staff development and diverse recruitment plan, in a sense of welcoming and belonging for students, parents, staff, and all members of the community. So as we've done in, in prior years and in, with budget books and in presentations, you know, our, our funding is really based on our enrollment. So up on the screen, and again, these, these presentations will be emailed to you tomorrow morning in a PDF format posted on our website, is a summary by grade level of enrollment at all our schools across the district. So again, we had a 14-student increase from last year as of the October census date, and we've had 49 students enroll, a net increase of 49 students enroll in Fitch, in Fitchburg since October 1st, bringing us up to the 5,003. Now Craig, this is from X2, correct?
That is correct.
So there's usually sometimes a little bit of difference between the, our X2 number and DESI's number, what they include for enrollment, correct?
Correct.
Just to be clear.
Yeah. Excuse me, we're all a year behind. So this year's funding was based on last year's October 1.
Okay. And, and the pre-K enrollment of 200, I guess, you, Craig, these are your notes here, and so I, I report this correctly. So the pre-K enrollment is estimated to be 200, is 200. Kindergarten is estimated to be 400 for next year.
That's the goal, is 400. And we've got, currently, we should end the year with 200 in pre-K, and we've received 243 pre-K or K packets for next year so far. Some complete, some incomplete, and enrollment centers contacting, I think, 51 parents to complete their packets.
And just as a reminder, the school, the school committee does vote on school choice in across the district, either by grade level or school. And as of this time, grades three, four, and six are close to school choice due to the enrollment numbers in those grades.
Excuse me, Superintendent, what happened to the letter of intent issue?
We haven't voted yet.
We're gonna wait until the end?
For the solar, yes, that's, that's an action item at the, on the agenda. Okay, so continuing, and this is right from the Department of Ed website, our, our student demographics, again, from a student perspective, about 74% of our students are diverse, 6.6% identify as African-American, 4.5% as Asian, Hispanic is 56.1%, those identifying as white at 25.8, and multirace non-Hispanic, 7%. So then just some selected populations that Department of Ed has classified that are commonly used, are first language not English, 37%, English language learners, 16.8%, students with disabilities at 24.2%, high needs at 82.2% and low income at 75.2%. And again, the link to that reference is at the bottom of the page. So looking at, it's always important to look at trends where we've been and where we're at. I would say we never know where we're going in terms of enrollment changes, but we have some just updates and comparisons to really where we're at now as a district, also sharing some state-level data, and where we were in 2018. So again, just looking at the change in the 2018 percentage of district and 20 to 2022 percentage of the district, really, the biggest changes were in the growth of our student population identifying as Hispanic, and the biggest decrease, almost it was the exact percentage, are those students who are identifying as white, at 5.6%. Looking at our staffing, again, we did the same comparison analysis, and again, from Department of Education website, and this is all staff, so this includes all different jobs who, who work in, in Fitchburg Public Schools. So this is, includes teachers, paras, clerical, janitors, administrators. So.
Superintendent?
Yep.
Is this the way it is done in all the districts by including everyone that works in the school?
This is how the Department of Ed.
Education, does it?
Yeah, this is the Department of Ed's data, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's consistent across the state.
Okay.
Okay. So again, you know, the changes here, you know, above 1% are the growth in staff identifying as Hispanic from 7.2% to 10.6% to 3.4% increase, and almost a similar decrease in staff identifying as white at 3.6%. And again, just the growth in staffing full-time equivalents from 2018 to 2022 is just about So again, this is just a summary of our staff and students demographics. Those who identify as Black, Indigenous, or people of color is 74.2% versus 73.7% last fiscal year. And on a staff basis, those who identify as Black, Indigenous, or people of color was 14.3% versus 12.4% in FY '21. And again, just what the, the difference in percentage is between our staff and students. As I mentioned earlier, and actually I'll go into a little bit more detail, moving from a passive to active recruiting approach, working to create and build a environment of inclusivity, inclusivity and belonging. And we've also had diversity, belonging, inclusion, and equity training to school leadership and to all staff.
We did make a slight gain. It wasn't much, but we did make a gain.
Slight gain. So as I mentioned earlier in the strategic plan, and here's really just a more detailed listing which, which I shared with you in an email, but again, the creation of the YouTube or the recruiting video that is now on YouTube, it's also featured on the front page of our district webpage, along with, we've also put a button that, for career openings, right on the front page, so you don't have to dig for the human resources side. If you're interested in working with us, we wanna make it easier, we're trying to remove barriers. Again, as I mentioned earlier, Fitchburg is now a member of the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, and I think there are now probably over 30 other community school districts who are partnerships in MPDE. As I mentioned earlier, John Harmon, our Director of Human Resources, has attended a number of virtual or in-person recruiting fairs, you know, some with Mass Hire, MPDE, Massachusetts Educational Recruiting Consortium, been to Fitchburg State, Bridgewater State, Fitchburg State Virtual Fair, Building Bridges Conference, that was last week, Career Open House at Fitchburg State, and TNTP is performing a talent landscape analysis with support from the Barr Foundation. We've had kind of a mid-process update, and we expect that talent landscape analysis to be completed sometime, really, the end of June. So I'm not sure if it'll, it'll make it, actually, I think we'll, we'll find out the preliminary findings on June 28th, so we won't make the scheduled last meeting of this year. And again, that landscape analysis with. And again, that landscape analysis with TNTP has involved focus groups, including students, staff, and parents. Some have been in-person, some have been virtual. And again, over the last year, we continued our DBIE training with Dr. Darnes Amate Jackson, as, as I mentioned earlier in the strategic plan. We executed that memorandum of understanding with Fitchburg State to help build a pipeline of students from Fitchburg Public Schools, Fitchburg State, and back to Fitchburg Public Schools. Also, again, because the staffing challenge is not unique to Fitchburg, it's across the state, across the country, again, personal advocacy or suggestions to consider to DESI, something like the Tennessee model, and what we can do to both get teachers, new teachers, into the classroom faster, and to have our teachers look more like our students. Okay, so, returning back to the, some more comparative analysis of subgroups, again, you know, first, the same time period as the earlier slides, 2018, really pre-pandemic to where we're at now, you know, first language, not English, looking at percentage of the district, has increased 4.3% on the district. The state has increased by 3%, so I guess you could look at it and say we've increased 25% more than the state in, in that category. English-language learners, percentage of the district, here says we're, when we increased by 3% from 13.8 to 16.8, and the state as a percentage increased only from 10.2 to 11%. So, we increased by 3% across the state, it was less than 1% at 8/10 of 1%. Students with disabilities, those requiring individual education plans of one sort, for the district, we're at 23.9, in 2018, increased to 24.2, a small 3/10 of a percent increase. Meanwhile, at the state level, it increased by 1.2%. So, our growth was slower than the state in that category, but we were, already had a higher percentage. High needs increased from 71.1% to 82.2%, an 11.1% increase, and a 9% increase at the state level. And lastly, the, the, you know, the classification of economically disadvantaged increased from 61.9 to 75.2, or 13.3% increase in Fitchburg, while at the state level, that number also increased from 32% to 43.8%, which is really an 11.8% increase across the state. So, again, mirroring state trends in the last two categories, but growing maybe a little bit more than the state as a whole. And again, the link to that is all from right below, the state demographics. So, another category that we look at, and this is the last, I'll say, student data slide that I'm, will be sharing with you tonight, and for those watching on FATV, is we look at mobility rate trend, and I guess, and in parentheses, Ms. Shalfo has put, you know, the COVID impact. So, where, where was Fitchburg, or what was the churn, which is another term that's commonly used to define the number of, or percentage of students who enroll in Fitchburg, and those who disenroll in Fitchburg or go to other districts. So, in 2017, you know, for all students, and I'm not going to go through each category for the sake of time, I, I know we're getting a little long in the tooth here, but overall, the 2017 churn percent was almost 19% at 18.9%. And actually, the most recent figures that we have available for 2021 were 14.5. So, I think it's fair to, you know, interpret that the, the impact of COVID was that people stayed in place more than they did before COVID. Is that the, the takeaway here, Craig?
And yet, the number of students decreased by 300, which, which is an interesting factor.
Right.
Which we, we, we saw that, and we saw that statewide.
Right. And that was largely at the kindergarten level.
Yep.
So, I'll just kind of transition and, and try to introduce Mr. Shalfo for all, all the fun, but again, as we've said to the school committee, which really can't emphasize enough, the importance of not only the Student Opportunity Act, which was signed into law back in November of 2019, again, pre-COVID, but also then the commensurate funding that the, the governor and state legislature have committed to, which really results in, you know, increasing Chapter 70, which is now, I think it's 76 or almost 77% of our budget. But statewide, you know, districts like Fitchburg, Gateway Cities are, the beneficiaries will receive over $2 billion increase a year. Again, we're getting that funding for a reason, as we just kind of summarize the, the growth and the needs of our students who are receiving or special education services, or who have been identified as having needs, and also our English-language learners, and educating economically disadvantaged students and high needs. And as we also mentioned earlier, how we've been hiring additional clinical staff across the district, and have plans to hire more support staff in this year's budget. So, some, some of the highlights, you know, for next school year, fiscal year '23, the foundation budget, which is also known as net school spending, increases just a, you know, a fraction under $8 million, which is historic, is the only term I can say. The increase in, in Chapter 70, which is the state aid, is $7 million, again, historic when our enrollment is only increasing 14 students. And, again, this is just, as the name implies, we in Fitchburg have an opportunity to do the best that's possible for our students, that students in other districts may have received in the past, and now the state is leveling the playing field. So, with that.
Thank you, Bob. So, just, again, I'll go through a number of slides, some of these you have already seen, and I can highlight some specific areas, as Superintendent Jokola just mentioned, the Student Opportunity Act, I mean, this is historic legislation. It's critically important for those districts like ours who have a high incidence of English-language learners, and just students that are coming from economically disadvantaged families. So, you can see just on this slide how, and this was captured from the, the foundation budget slide, we have 884 students that are in our L program between pre-K and 12, and then, you know, 4,4147 classified as, as low income. And I think the critical piece to this is when you look at the highlighted box in yellow at the bottom, the difference in that per pupil expenditure, and that's really where that impact landed, because we know we only increased 14 students, but the actual per pupil expenditure went up over 1,000, so that's critically important, you know, as we move forward for the next several years under the Student Opportunity Act. And again, this just captures, under the net school spending, the, what we receive for Chapter 70, or state funding, and then what we have from the city of Fitchburg here is local funding. And we are split typically at 75, 25, and we fall pretty close to that, 76.8 to 23.2. And again, this graphic just shows the, the decrease in enrollment due to the pandemic. You know, we know that we lost 177 students during the pandemic, we got 14 students back this year under October 1st, and we're hoping to recapture, you know, Bob highlighted earlier that we've increased about 49, 50 students, we're hoping that they all stay with us, and they're counted in this year's, or this coming year's October 1st enrollment. And again, this just captures the difference between, and you can see the stability in our enrollment over the last several years, but then when you look at that last jump in per pupil, from 14,342 to 15,701, and that really characterizes what the Student Opportunity Act is doing for us. And again, this is just a quick reference to that 7,000, a $7 million increase in Chapter 78 that we've been discussing, you know, for the last two months here at this committee. Again, just highlighting some of the high-level increases, our enrollment foundation budget up to 88.8 million, our required local contributions at 20.5, Chapter 70 at 68.2 million, and again, the net school spending, and that's the, that I guess would be the floor of our commitment to funding the students in the city of Fitchburg at 88.8 million. And again, these numbers just show the comparison between FY22, FY23, that highlighted number there at $73.9 million, that's this year's school budget, which is up over, a little over $7 million from last year, from $66.9 million last year. And as you look down under that subtotal, that's the 67 million, that's the school direct spending amount, that's minus the transportation. The last update, we did provide our, our transportation numbers, we had reduced them down to $6.7 million, and it was, we had a kind of a placeholder there at $8 million. So that was reflected in both of those calculations for our direct school spending. And currently, based on this, that we are $3,338 over net school spending for this FY23. This slide just highlights some of the more specific areas of where we're spending our funding, particularly around our new positions, and what our salary totals are, and you can see an increase in salaries from $46.2 million to $49.3 million, it was an increase, $3 million over the last year. 2.1 is our contractual and negotiable obligations, we still have one contract we have not finalized, we're hoping to have the nurses' contract done very soon, and we can firm up these numbers. But we've been talking about that $7 million figure for about two months now, and that's where we're looking. So, again, what our spending will be for our salaries, what we have left over, roughly $3.6 million that we'll be looking at to fund new positions. We have 51 positions on our next slide that will show where we're investing that Chapter 70 money. And that brings us to the total of the $73 million for this year's school budget. Here's this $3.6 million of investments, we're looking at by school, how many positions we've added, 10 positions at the high school, two and a half positions at Goodrich Academy, seven at Long Joe Middle School, five at Memorial, six at Crocker, seven at McKay, five at Rhine Gold, two at the Early Learning Center, and then seven other positions at the district level. Just kind of summarize those, we have 51 positions, eight special education positions, four under SEL, and then nine Title I positions district-wide. So that's where our real, real commitment is as we move forward, and at that district level, you can see that we've added another one and a half PCBAs to support our SEL needs district-wide, as, as well as our commitment to our support services that we need for all of our schools. And this just groups things up into big buckets, and we know that we have our net school spending at 88.8 million, 73.9 is our school budget, 76.8% of that will come from Chapter 70, and then the rest of that will come under the school spending, the direct school spending at $67 million for this year. Circuit breaker, and that's kind of a estimate right now, FY22, we're about 2.6, we're estimating that we'll be claiming about $2.9 million on circuit breaker this year. Federal grants, again, that includes all of our titled money, includes our ESAR, Perkins, special education grants that we receive, and that will be estimated about $25 million as we move forward. Much of that is $16.6 million in ESAR III, and three, estimated 3 million additional unspent monies in, in ESAR II. I will mention it later on a slide, that we did just receive some information that there's a, the potential for an 18-month overage for spending. So these, these federal funds have to be spent by the end of a certain time, and they're looking at a waiver that we can apply to extend that, because everyone is having a difficult time trying to spend the, the money they have. We're currently having, by the end of this year, about a $4 million balance in school choice, and we're estimating about $900,000 in receipts this coming year. And then our capital, again, we're looking at our big investments in our hair, our asbestos management plan, district-wide, and then using our ESAR funding for ventilation, HVAC, building controls, building envelopes, and I have another slide that gets into greater detail later on. But these are the big buckets of money that we're looking at to spend in FY23. And again, this just highlights what we can use ESAR funds for and what we can't for, it really is around mitigating the impact of COVID-19. Much has been talked about, you know, what we spent previous for PPE and preparing our school buildings for return to in-person learning, as well as re-engaging parents and students after the length of time that they were out, really looking at improving our facilities, and then providing the educational tools that we need for teaching and learning district-wide. It's not there to be spent on merit pay, it wasn't, it was never used for subsidizing or offsetting executive salaries. So, we're really looking at what the impact of the needs are for our buildings and for teaching and learning district-wide as it was impacted by the pandemic. So again, we're, we're estimating ESAR II, you know, we'll probably have a balance of four to five million in ESAR II, we know it will be receiving 16.6 million in ESAR III for, that's $22 million balance as we move forward. And again, these deadlines for spending, September 23, September 24, and we're looking at the possibility of an 18-month extension to spend down those funds. These are the things that we've looked at to target our ESAR funding, replacing all unit ventilators at Rhine Gold Memorial and South Street, replace and upgrade roofs in air handles at Rhine Gold and Memorial, building controls district-wide, and this is basically providing us the opportunity to regulate our heat controls in every building, which now tend to be on or off. This will provide us with the ability, as they did at one point, I think it was earlier in this, or end of last year, where this room, the AC was off, made a phone call in the building, the AC was turned on literally from somebody at home on their, on their laptop or, or cellphone. So hoping to upgrade all of those, all of our building controls, looking at replacing roofs at Goodrich, Goodrich Academy, as well as the South Street, Early Learning Center, looking at both the East building, or currently the South building and the East building, looking at replacing all of our portables, which will be a significant investment, and then we have some preliminary numbers in right now to upgrade or fully replace our playgrounds at the Early Learning Center and at Rhine Gold with, with brand-new equipment. Lead times right now are out 18 weeks, so even if we can get out to bid, we're still looking at probably something that won't happen until late fall or early spring the following year.
Mr. Shalfo?
Yes, go ahead.
Question? What is the condition of the unit ventilators at Long Joe Middle School?
So, Long Joe doesn't utilize a system that has unit ventilators there, it's a steam-driven, so radiators, for the most part, I think there are probably less than a half dozen unit ventilators in that building. So, when we're looking at some of the older buildings, and that's why it's designated Rhine Gold Memorial and South Street, to look at the unit ventilators, because they're mainly run from those systems, where some of our, you know, Goodrich Academy and, and Long Joe... Joe run from the old steam system. So we have replaced steam traps, and we will continue to do that. We did that through green communities this year, and they did, I think, within the last three years as well. So we'll continue to work with the older systems, we're hoping to upgrade their furnaces. If we don't get accepted into the MSBA program this year for Long Joe, we will have to consider replacing the Long Joe boilers using ESAR funds.
Thank you.
Confident we can get one heating season, not confident that we can get a second heating season out of those boilers. And again, just looking at our staffing, targeting special education, low-income Ls in any COVID-related learning loss with our expanded summer school, as we did last year, and we will continue to do this summer, additional staffing, the professional development, particularly with our co-teaching, and then supporting the academic and social, emotional intervention positions, and re-engaging in looking at recovery and acceleration for all students to fill gaps. And we do that, we continue to look at strategies to offset these gaps that were created during the pandemic. Just high level, these are just some of the technology investments. Again, I highlighted this earlier, we moved from a 7 through 12 one-to-one to a K to 12. We've expanded our esports, or actually started a new esports program, and then actually have upgraded since the original investment. The esports program at the high school is doing extremely well. We have added graph, we've updated the graphic arts lab at Fitchburg High School, and the new 55 Wycom tablets for the other program, and I'm trying to think of the name of the program. It's not the manufacturing, but it is the...
It's not the graphic design.
It's not the graphic design, it's the lab right next to it. I will get that information when we...
Why can't I think of it?
We continue to purchase Chromebooks as they become available and necessary to replace our one-to-one cycles, and we've deployed 52 computer workstations to upgrade the manufacturing labs, and that was the other program that I just mentioned. And then E-Rate, these are federal funds that Eileen Spinney and her team have been working on to upgrade all of our schools district-wide to continue to build the backbone of our Wi-Fi system and network. And then the connectivity grant that we received also to provide us additional hotspots and computers for homes. This is just a highlight of the facilities, and again, this presentation will be shared with you. I welcome any feedback, and can sit with you specifically. I know I'm running through things pretty quickly. We know that we have a need in our buildings, and we continue to commit to replace some of the major systems as we move forward. Capital projects looking forward in FY '23, specifically looking at projects for the HARA Management Plan ATC, which is now Atlas, is our liaison. We, you know, follow their lead and try to follow and improve our testing program, and then as we find materials, we can designate it as asbestos containing, remove it as assumed, and start working on plans to remove it. And we just removed all the asbestos tiles from the South Street Elementary School Gymnasium, and we'll continue to do that across the district. The challenge with that is they can only be done when students are not in the building. And then again, I've highlighted these other major system replacements with unit ventilators, building controls, roofs, envelopes, heating plants, security infrastructure, and then continuing to look at our district-wide phone system that needs to be replaced. MSBA projects, we've talked a lot about the new Crocker Elementary School, we're looking at going to 60 and 90% construction documents through this summer, and then receiving, and we'll be getting new estimates as they move through each one of those benchmarks, and then looking at the bid process, I believe, which will be late fall into early winter of FY of '22. And again, the buildings, the South Street boilers and roof have been completed, and we're looking at the last two MSBA, the windows, hopefully we'll have a positive vote in June from the MSBA, which means we'll be going to city council in early July for the appropriation of the budget for that project. And then hopefully by that time, expecting some response from MSBA in early fall about the Long Joe boilers.
Mr. Schalliffe?
Yes.
Are we there yet?
I'm sorry?
Are we there yet?
I am done.
Oh.
Ran through that as quickly as I could, I appreciate your patience.
Well done. We just have two grants to...
But I guess before you go onto the grant, I just, are there any questions?
Feel free to email me, any questions, call me, we can discuss them. Again, this will be shared with you, provide feedback, I appreciate any of your feedback. This will be presented as a full final reading on June 6th. We have two grants this evening, one to be submitted, that's a civics teaching and learning grant for $40,000, is to support civics teaching and learning, including but not limited to the implementation of student-led, nonpartisan civics projects district-wide, and one to be accepted, that is the 21st Century Summer Internship Pilot Program from $35,000.
No questions? Okay, all right. Somebody make a motion to...
Make the motion to bundle action items 22-165 and action items 22-167 through 22-170.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the bundle that was just approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.